This is our truth and taxation public hearing. Um, the first thing on the agenda under stewardship resources, truth and taxation presentation. Kara.
Good evening, board and public. Um, I'll go through our tax process real quickly and hit all the required parts of this hearing. Um, in this hearing, we're going to talk about the levy process, um, where the taxes, the amounts come from, the district's actual budget for last year and for this year, and then we'll have public comment. Um, we are required by law to hold this hearing. Um, from a law in 1989, the county sent out your tax statements and we'll hold this hearing to talk about those and how they'll be spent. This meeting is required to be held between certain dates at a certain time and all the different bullet points that we'll talk about. The schools cycle, um, we have a fiscal year end of June 30th, which is different than the other government cities and counties, which year end is December 31st. So the, the amount that we're levying right now, um, is not until our fiscal year 26 operating year. Kind of hard to see, but, um, the county assessor will, um, determine values on properties, um, in late 2023 and early 2024. Um, we will calculate the levy based on several inputs between July and September. Um, in November, you got your proposed tax statements, um, not your final ones. Um, we're having this hearing and then these will be certified in January by the county and you will make payments on these in April and in November. It's confusing sometimes when you get your property tax statement because it may seem like your taxes went up unfairly or by a significant amount. And what happens is we just have to remember the taxes are just a giant pie and every taxpayer in the, in the county, um, is assessed a certain part of that. So, um, let's say, um, Mindy and Ben have two properties and these is the blue, Ben's is the orange. And they're each valued at the same. They're each $100,000 and our levy is $500,000, $500. And there are only two taxpayers. So it's really simple. And Mindy's home value goes up to 125,000. The assessor thinks it's beautiful and Ben's only goes up by 110,000. Still nice, not as nice. So, um, the levy is still $500, but because the home value went up more on Mindy's home, she is going to pay a larger percentage of the taxes. She's act, hers is actually going to increase or Ben's is going to decrease because his, his property is a smaller percentage of the total property value. So it's important to understand what's happening in our county and our district because that feeds into how much taxes we end up paying. That's something else happened this year in law that affected taxpayers positively. Um, this tax statement, this proposed tax statement, the taxes on the value are, the proposed value is flat. The state increased the homestead market value exclusion, which deducts a part of your value right off the top and you're not taxed on it. So if your home is valued up to $517,000, you will get an exclusion and you will not be taxed on a portion of your property. So that, that amount went up and it's very obvious on this property taxpayers', um, statement. This person's taxes will go down, um, quite a bit if they're in our district. Because if you look at the back of your tax statement, you can see, um, our district's taxes are going down 4.6%. We would have liked them to go up with an operating referendum, but that didn't pass. So they're going down. Um, 4.6%, and this is the breakout. And it was, it was confusing this year because we had some debt dropping off and some other debt going up. So overall, um, the general fund levy is going down and the debt service levies are also going down. And the reasons for these, the general fund is going down, um, we have to levy for retiree self insurance. Um, we do have a trust fund still from the debt we issued, but, um, we need to start putting that on the levy because when our trust is depleted, all of that liability will go on the levy every year. And right now that's about $3 million. So when that trust is gone, that will end up going on the levy. The debt service, um, the best way to describe this is we, the debt for those retiree benefits is part of that green bar and that debt is paid off in fiscal year 25. This, this levy is for fiscal year 26. So we don't need to collect any, um, taxes for that debt service in 26. And we structure our debt payments so that, um, the effects of those issuances aren't, um, volatile on the taxes. So people don't feel a huge increase when we issue debt. We structure it so it's nice and flat. So the school building bonds, those are the blue. And those amounts, those debt service payments were structured to be lower until this debt came off the rolls. And then that, those payments go up significantly and taxpayers, overall, our, our debt service payments are going down. Um, so that is a win for everyone. We're meeting our debt service obligations and we're paying off our debt. This shows a summary of operating referendum in the state of Minnesota and it breaks it out. I really like this chart from Baird. It breaks it out by, um, metro districts and rural districts in total. Um, so you can see of the total 278 rural districts in the state of Minnesota, 191 of them have an operating referendum. So 68% of them do. And that authority for those districts is averages $908. Metro districts also, um, 89% of metro districts have operating referendums to assist with their operations. The average authority for those districts is $1,559. So if we had that per student would be, you know, we would have a different conversation in the upcoming months regarding our budget. So just something to be aware of. And this is just a map that shows the operating referendum in the state. The exciting part, you heard from our auditors last month, our audit, um, we got a clean audit and unmodified opinion, the best opinion you can get. We retain our low auditee status, which is probably only exciting to me, but, um, I'm glad to have it. And the best part is our fund balance. We increased our fund balance. We met the floor of our fund balance goal. We're at 10% of our operating expenditures in our unrestricted fund balance. So, um, we really thought this would day would take a lot longer. Um, even, you know, a few months ago, but because of how our COVID money was coming due, it all had to be spent by September 30th. There wasn't enough expenses in 25 before September 30th to use up all our COVID. And I didn't want to lose any. So I moved part of that back to 2024. And that is why we have our fund balance goal, why we met it. So this is just very exciting. It, it puts us kind of at a restart, like we're here. Now we're just working on our operations. And this also our fund balance, you can see the 10% for this year. And I'm predicting for the end of fiscal year 25, we will also, um, be about a 10%. The yellow is the Department of Education's, um, fund balance measurement. It's the SOD calculation, how they measure, um, district health. If a district is below, um, a negative 2.5%, they're in SOD statutory operating debt. Um, and we never want to be there and we never want to be where we were just a couple of years ago in fiscal year 22. With the fund balance, it definitely helps with our cash also. And without that COVID money, we wouldn't be where we are, like I was saying. Um, the orange in here represents the COVID funding. So the blue is our expenses for the last 10 years. The green is all our revenues except for COVID money. And you can see without that COVID funding, we would not have exceeded expenses in the last couple of years. So it's, it's exciting that we've come through this because we all know it was very difficult. Um, there's still more difficult times to come, but we need to celebrate, um, what's happened. Where our money comes from has not been consistent. The biggest part has consistently been state aids. Federal aids, um, went up in 21 through 24 and that is COVID money. Um, that is going away. In fiscal year 25, we have, we spent, because it's all done, um, approximately $350,000 in COVID money. Um, a lot of it was for summer school. We just had a really robust summer school. So some of those expenses will have to be cut back, but we were able to use that much for that. The fees and donations have become a bigger part of, um, our revenue. And, you know, everyone is feeling that, but we have to make up our budget somehow. And then taxes and other local is a smaller part of our budget, unfortunately. Our expenses, where we're spending money has consistently been in instruction. And this is, this is great. 73% of every dollar we spend goes directly to a classroom. Um, 11% is spent on our buildings and some may argue that's not enough to upkeep our buildings, but we're making it work right now. Um, pupil support is transportation and counselors and nurses. That is also shrunk. And then administrative support also has decreased and that's at 8%. So definitely the majority of our money going to the classroom where it's most importantly spent. And with that, um, like we have talked about for years, we spend the majority of our money on people. And, you know, extremely important, um, in a district our size, it's also important to keep up our, um, transportation fleet and that, we didn't buy any buses last year. We had one budgeted, we ordered it and they, there's a long lead time on those, so we didn't get it. Um, so we're purchasing it this year. But just know, we're putting off, um, capital improvements and purchases that we have, that has been a part of our normal operations for several years. And with the size of our districts, it's just important that we keep a balance and remember those are important also. Where we are today, fiscal year 25, our original budget for the general fund, you approved a $900,000 surplus. Um, we did have $650,000 in that budget for fund balance help. And when I removed the COVID funds from 25's budget, I removed that fund balance health because we're at our goal. And you can tell me to put it back and I will put it back. Um, but because we're at the 10%, I removed it. It's a discussion, um, topic, definitely. So overall, our budget, we're about break even. It's very close. Um, another, you know, reason that fund balance is important, when you look at our revenue, and this is not an accrual basis, this is what cash in, this is cash in, cash out. Um, we're down $4 million right now from the beginning of the year from July 1st because the state holds back our money. We don't get all our revenue right away. So, you know, we need that cushion to be able to operate throughout the year until, um, those receipts catch up. This has been a topic, especially with the, the legislature approving, um, linking inflation to, um, the, the formula, the basic education formula. And if they had maintained that, our district would have $5.7 million more, um, since they decoupled those. So, um, just another example of why it's harder for districts to make it, um, when in these days, you can see what inflation has done. The unfortunate part is next year, um, the legislature capped the basic formula at 3% increase. Right now inflation for next year is anticipated at 2.1%. So that's my assumption I'm using right now. Sorry about that. Um, 2.1%, but 2.1% on our total expenses is quite a bit. And 2.1% on our formula is only $600,000. So there's a disconnect because that 2.1% isn't on all our money. It's only on a small part. And if inflation is at 2.1%, health insurance is likely at 5, 6, 7, 8%. And it's just a losing battle for school districts right now. But again, we're making it work. And this is really exciting, um, because we, um, spend less than the average district. Um, we spend $1,300 less than the average district. And you'll hear how our test scores are above state average and above the districts in our area. That's exciting. We spend less because we get less money. Um, the amount less is $1,300 less. And when we asked the voters for the referendum, it was $1,100. So, um, just kudos to everyone in our district for all the work they're doing, um, to make this district work. Does anyone have any questions?
Kara, can you flip back to that page that showed the percentages of levy change? Um, if you showed up there, the, showed a task county, city of Grand Rapids.
Oh yeah, for sure. Yeah.
So if I, if I'm reading that correctly, a task county increased their levy by 3%. City of Grand Rapids increased by 4.6%. And we decreased ours by 4.6%.
Yeah.
If you look at that chart, we're, this is the only entity that whose levy went down besides city of Big Fork on that entire list.
I did get a lot of calls from taxpayers complaining about their taxes.
Kara, can you clarify how we look at a 4.6% uh, percent decrease, uh, in tax revenue? Is that because we don't need that money?
Oh goodness, no. Um, it, we, we can't really say we need more money, so we're going to get more money. It's all set by formulas. Our decrease is a result of, um, assumptions a few years back. Um, so they go back every, they, it's every other year. So I believe it's 23 and 21 on these taxes. They look at adjustments. They look at any changes in assumptions for enrollment and our tax capacity, so our tax value in our area, if any of that has changed, um, these show up as adjustments. So the, the $268,000 is, is because of the retiree health. Um, just me saying our budget's going to be more tight. I don't want to pay this out of the general fund because it's a year lag. Um, so structurizing that and then just adjustments. So 168,000 in adjustments is not a lot, um, when it comes to assumptions from two and four years back.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think one of the things that Kara hit on is that structuring of debt and structuring of our levy, uh, and if people look at their property tax statements, they'll see that a portion of the school district, uh, tax went up and a portion of it went down. Um, and that has to do with how that was structured so that in the end it was fairly level. That's intentional. It's part of budgeting and, and kind of the formulas that Kara talked about, but a lot has to do with the planning. So just wanted to, to comment on that. Um, the, I think the approved part is the part that went up. Uh, and that's because of that green that dropped off.
Does the tax formula, when they calculated, does it have anything to do with us getting rid of properties and buildings, kinds of things or no?
It would if those immediately went on the tax rolls and had value. Um, but they haven't made it to the tax rolls yet, the ones that we disposed of.
I was just wondering if that had anything to do with taxes.
Good job. Thank you, Kara. Thank you, Kara. Uh, Julie, has anyone signed up for public info? This time we're going to adjourn the taxation hearing. We'll come back into session for a workshop at 6:30. Great job, Kara.
All's an email.
Just for the record, too thrilled by the audit.
Yeah.
30%.
Deli of the month, that's always.
All the work's up to order. Uh, the first item on the agenda tonight is a review of the 2025 school board meeting schedule. 2% of gross.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, in your packet, you'll see a calendar for 2025 board meetings. Uh, again, our, our calendar is not uh, coincidental with the coincidental with the school year. Ours runs January through December. And we started with the draft. You'll approve this or a a calendar at the organizational meeting in January, but this draft represents a pretty close mapping of the 2024 calendar onto the 2025 calendar of our board meetings. The days in blue are the days that were proposing for regular meeting. The days in green are the days that were proposing for the workshop. You can also see the big fork dates in there shown with that gradient as well, January and June and September. The days in gray are days that we cannot have a board meeting, whether that's because of absences due to, you know, a conference or a holiday or a an election date or primary. We also tried to be aware of MREA, the school board conference, things like that. So can't think of any other nuances to share. The we we tried to stick to the same number of meetings as well and work those workshops in where we can. I can't think of any other nuances. I don't know. Mark and remembering.
Questions or comments from the board?
So if you see something between now and January 6th that stands out to you and we need to make an adjustment, that would be kind of the last chance to do that. We obviously the board can call a special meeting or we can call a special meeting with three days' notice. If we need to, we have, but this is how this looks right now.
A little better. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, strategy team update. Sixty percent of growth.
All right, I'm not gonna go talk a great deal because the the meat potatoes is is on deck, but I just wanted to just highlight our strategy team again. This is a group that comes together to work on the implementation of our operational plan. And so we've you've seen this graphic before. You'll see it again tonight. But it starts with our strategic directions. Our operational plan feeds the work of our strategy team. Our strategy team's purpose is to improve outcomes for students ultimately by creating action steps. And I'm seeing really a good deal of maturity come out of that group. It's maturing over time. Anna does a great job of facilitating this this group, and I appreciate the diligence of the team that that assembled because they're ultimately stepping away and out of their, you know, already full-time job away from that to come and do this deep planning and and thinking for our district. This is a process and you'll see this again later, but this is the process we use to get better. We start by listening, developing high-level action or a plan, objectives, goals, planning. They feed our early outs and then we monitor to see how we're doing. These are our strategy team goals that were updated for this school year. And I'm so happy that even though those are small and I can still see them. We did expand or add to the number of goals that we have for this year in part because there were some goals from 2324 that we needed to stack on to or continue with. So and we also align these now. You can see how these align with the objectives in our strategic plan. So it's listed on here. The first couple are about evidence-based approaches and they tie into our work around reading and the implementation of some strategies in a book. In a book that our secondary staff are working through. The next one is in the equitable education direction, and that's ongoing work in our behavior area. That's a carryover goal from last year. The same with the third one or fourth one there. That's a carryover goal from last year, improving our school-to-home communication. We've developed some expectations and we're taking steps towards that. And so that's good to see that that work being refined and implemented. The bottom one here, this is the implementation or the second to the bottom, implementation of our wit and wisdom curriculum and working that plan. So that's part of the work too, is ensuring that that is is successful. And the bottom one again is a evidence-based approach goal around Orton-Gillingham. And you can see some very specific expectations there. And one of the things that we've really been thinking about is accountability and how do we make sure to measure what we're doing and ensure that we're meeting those objectives, doing what we say we're gonna do. We have science that we're also implementing. So that's also in our in our plan to do that. Again, walkthroughs are how we're measuring whether that is happening or not. Work around crisis. This will probably be an ongoing goal that we have every year. And so our crisis team is tied to our strategy team through members that cross over. I sit on both. A couple of our principals sit on both. And so that's a way that we kind of cross-populate those two teams. Dart, this is how we're measuring student. This is how we're measuring student data or tracking student data or identifying students in need of extra support. And so this is is about implementation with fidelity. You can see that next one is about data and how we're using data. And then finally, that last one is about testing protocols, again, one that we carried over from last year. That's about ensuring that the data that we get accurately represents what our kids know and can do. And so we just want to make, we think it's only fair and right to our kids, fair and right to our families, fair and right to our staff and our community that those that those data are accurate. So those are the goals for this year. Again, they feed, they feed and they serve really in support of our strategic directions. You can see that lined up there. Just wanted to share that out, that that work with you. And then this next this next piece that you'll hear is going to be a deeper dive into parts of this work. So I'll hand it over to, it looks like Anna. There's a whole bunch of. Yeah.
Right.
There's clicker.
Thanks.
Yeah. Those are great laser objects. Awesome.
Well, watch out. Dangerous with that. Um, all right. Well, thank you for inviting us to come today. We're excited to be here. Before we get started, I just want to introduce our team. We come and talk to you all the time. So we brought some other leaders in data today. So I'm Anna. I'm the Director of Special Services. Ashley Linder, first grade at Coliseum.
Brenda Mate, Coliseum, specially teaching.
Jill Belloc, East Principal.
Ryan Abay.
And Bobby Adams was gonna be with us today too.
So so we're happy to be here. We figured you were sick of hearing from us though. So we other people. Today we're gonna talk about, we're gonna kind of start with the big picture. So we're gonna start with our strategic directions and talk about how those align with our data work. We're gonna talk a bit about the role of the strategy team and just add a few more details from what Matt just said. We're gonna talk specifically around assessment and database decision-making because those are the two heavy lifts that we've had in our data work over the last four years. We're gonna have a few of our teachers talk about how they use data practices in their classroom, really to design responsive instruction for students. And then we're also gonna talk about how we use data to inform systems implementation and make decisions about what to implement. And then to determine how our implementation is going. And lastly, we're gonna talk about last year's MCA results and next steps from there. So connection to the strategic directions. Data is really infused in all of the strategic directions in some capacity. So when we look at equitable access, representation and outcomes, there's no way that we can determine if our students are getting what they need and all students are getting what they need without some objective data. So our data framework has really been pivotal pivotal in identifying disproportionality and giving us the information we need to target specific disproportionality that were showing up in our data. And really, it's the foundation for ensuring that we're making progress and correcting those disproportionality. When we think about a culture of trust, engagement and belonging, one of the things that gets confusing in education systems is there's a lot of opinions floating around. And everybody has a little different opinion on how we should do something or why we should do or why we should do it. So data really gives us that that objective point that we can all look at and we can all use to get on the same page and really be transparent and create clarity around what's happening and what our next steps are. And if what we're doing is working. Database decision-making is really a huge foundational evidence-based practice. When you look at the research, the effect size of putting together a multi-tiered systems of support framework in your school setting is one of the highest evidence-based practices that we could do for our students and to improve student outcomes. We also use data to monitor the fidelity of our implementation. So how well we're doing something is built into our evidence-based practice framework. So you'll see that in walkthroughs. You'll see that in different ways that we measure if what we said we were gonna do is actually happening. Partnerships and collaboration. Again, in order to have really healthy conversations, we have to be objective. We have to take that emotional piece aside. We have to triangulate our opinions with actual tangible facts. And, you know, we're gonna talk more about that in a bit, and that can be difficult. And that's kind of right where we're at right now in terms of our learning. And lastly, stewardship of resources. We are running on, as you all know, a pretty, you know, we just don't have enough resources to do everything we need to do. But data really helps us identify problems quickly and efficiently and provide a quick response. So this creates an efficiency that saves money, time and capacity. So data shows up in our operational plan in four places. You can see objective 1.1 and 1.2 are both in our equitable outcomes, representation and access strategic direction. And again, that's really the foundation of that work. And these objectives are around not missing any students and ensuring that the data we have flowing in that we're analyzing was taken with fidelity and is accurate and that we're counting every single kid. And then from there, objective 1.2 is really around identifying those disparities. So how do we take that data, identify what groups of students are at the classroom level, what individual students need additional support or need to be targeted? Objective 2.1 is around a culture of trust, engagement and belonging, really specific to students. So the purpose of this objective is to make sure that we are getting feedback from students on how it feels to be part of our building and how they're doing in their emotional wellbeing and their social wellbeing in school. And that's really important for us to live out, to do that culture of trust, engagement, belonging, strategic direction. Objective 3.5 is around building that multi-systems of support framework. So that's around not only the data collection, but then following that up with processes and procedures to ensure that we're taking that data and using it to improve outcomes for students and ensure they get what they need in the system. So from there, the strategy team uses the Minnesota Multi-Tierred Systems of Support Framework. We've really embraced this for a lot of reasons. The first reason is the Minnesota Department of Ed has partnered with the University of Minnesota. So we know that this framework is foundationally sound in terms of its structure. And they're using evidence-based practices. The second is it's a very cost-effective framework to use in that the Department of Education provides a lot of free supports around this. So we've accessed a lot of free professional development. A lot of the people that are on the team at the state level work with us individually or with buildings to help build out their systems and troubleshoot. So it's really a cost-effective framework to use for us as well. And the two areas of this framework that are relevant to the conversation today are assessment and database decision-making. Because we've done a lot of heavy lifting on that assessment system, which you guys have heard about for the last four years, pretty much continuously, we're getting very close to fidelity on that. We have just a couple hotspots that we're working through. We know where they are, but ultimately most, almost all of our spaces, we have several data points coming in on all of our kits that we use as a universal screener, which Jen's gonna talk about in a minute. But we're feeling really confident in that system is built and we're just continuing to refine it. But that really isn't where the heavy lift is this year. The heavy lift really falls more in the database decision-making section. So now we have all this data. What do we do with it? Right? How do we use it as at the district levels? How do we use it at the building level? And how do we use it at that classroom level? So we're really working through our shared leadership teams and our early outs and the different structures that we already have in place to build staff skillsets in database decision-making. And we're right in the messy. So it's not something everybody's feeling super confident about. That's okay. So that's kind of where we're at on that. Whereas, you know, we can we can send out those assessment windows and people are very confidently getting their kids screened right away. So you can tell we're a couple of years, a few years down the road on that one. But you'll see that the goals are really around decision-making. So we have one goal related to a building level procedure around identifying students who may be in need of an intervention. And that's our dart teams. So you can see that the goal is really that those dart teams are using an evidence-based procedure to analyze and identify what kids might need intervention in the system and what the next steps are for those kids. You can see the next goal is more at that individual classroom level. So this is really around teachers building their skillsets to analyze the data for the students in their classroom. Identify a group of students or individual or an individual student that might need something different, create an action plan around it, implement the change and monitor the change over time. So the MTSS assessment framework provides us with with four key things. It provides us the ability to know who needs support, what specific support is needed and whether those systems are working, whether our systems are working or what we've implemented is working. And then also to know whether students have what they need for academic, social and emotional and behavioral success. One thing that we're working on too, just kind of as an aside, is there's really no one data point that tells the whole story. And when I think about kind of where we're at with database decision-making, a lot of the questions that we get from staff is, you know, this one test doesn't tell the whole story. And you're right, it doesn't. But when we can look at several different data points, when we can look at that STAR test, when we can look at their attendance rate, we can look at their office discipline referral rate and reliably know when kids come down to the office and and what the procedure is for that, we can start to put together the picture and really understand our students better. And then you layer on a social emotional screener where the kid's giving us direct feedback, right, on how they're doing. So from that data, we can really put together a good plan for investigating that problem at a higher level and a more efficient, you know, more efficiently than we would if we didn't have that data. Again, you're always gonna have to dive in and dig deeper from the data, but it really streamlines. At least you know what questions you're asking. So again, we're at a point with our assessment where the big blocks are in place and Jen's gonna talk about those. So that's super exciting. Any questions on that part? I know. I was a little scared of it.
All right. So all right. So like Anna said, assessment is pretty much hashed out at this point. So I'll go kind of quickly through these, but the four big buckets for assessment and a strong system are universal screening, diagnostic assessment, progress monitoring and program fidelity. So to go first in universal screening, when we talk about this, we often make the comparison of going to the doctor and you get your temperature taken when you go there, right? And that temperature, depending on how high or low it is, is a good indicator of your health, your overall health. Universal screening is the same thing. It gives us a good indicator. Universal screening is the same thing. It gives us a good indicator as to the health of the system and the health of the student. And that's in regard to any of the universal screening assessments that we administer, the social-emotional, behavioral, the academic, or when we're looking at universal data as a whole. So just so you know, this data or this process is reviewed every single year. It goes to our principals, it goes to our BLLT members. We seek feedback. I can tell you that our, um, calendar of testing has not been the same for every year that we've been doing this. There's never been one year that's been exactly the same. Every year we analyze, we go through that continuous feedback loop, and we make improvements. We're also always aligning it to state mandates, and we're looking at systems health and individual student health over time. Um, we aim in our universal screening to make sure that ninety-seven to a hundred percent of students are screened. This is huge and seemed almost unattainable when we started, um, but we're there in a lot of areas, and we've been there consistently over time. Um, so only in rare cases do we not screen our students. Um, we primarily screen in math, reading, social-emotional, behavioral, phonics, and spelling. Uh, we do this three times a year universally, fall, winter, spring. We have an additional November window, and that's, um, really the purpose there is to provide families at conferences with the most recent information. Um, you'll, you'll hear things like Fastbridge Star or Gallingham Sabers. Those are all our universal screening tools. Um, and then we're careful to monitor local testing limitations. The state has statutes around how much we can test locally. We are not even close to hitting anywhere near what those state limitations are, so we're all good there. Um, and even with that, and still staying under that mandate, we have some teachers who increase the frequency of their testing because it guides their instruction immediately. So depending on where people are in their understanding of how they can use these resources, um, some teachers provide a little bit more testing. We also rolled out last year our teaching and learning website, and all of our assessment information is now built in one spot there. Um, and we just, we're working on building some analytics to see how this is being accessed, but I can tell you it's, it's been a game changer to have this website and people accessing that information. So that universal screening that helps the system data is used across tiers of supports and district-wide. I'm gonna dive in. I'm so excited for people to share their real-life experiences with it. Um, but it's shared, um, it's, it's used across tiers. So some, some evidence of that is in tier one. Um, a few years ago, we didn't have a universal phonological awareness, um, resource, and we adopted that. Then we found that it was being very effective, so actually in grade two, we said, you don't need to do that so much. Our kids are doing well. In grade three, we have fluency groups that, um, teachers are running because of this data. We just, about two weeks ago, um, got Frackle, which is a, um, online software program that ties to suit STAR scores and is an intervention that progresses them through their own individual pathway to proficiency. We did that because we had some concerns in four five based on that universal screening data. And we're providing enrichment across grades and buildings based on that. In tier two and tier three, I don't know what we'd do without it. All of our database decision-making, our intervention groups, um, our referrals for special education, our students receiving special education, all of that data guides that work, um, as it guides our gifted and talented identification. And I think this year, um, we've been excited to dive in at the district level and see how is this data feeding into our growth in our district operational plan, um, because we've really established that fidelity. The data that we're looking at is clean and good, and, uh, we can really determine resource allocation, staffing, um, areas of disproportionality based on what we're seeing, um, with that quick little screener. So just like you go to the doctor and you get that temperature taken, if it's of, uh, very high concern, they might do further testing, and that's really what diagnostic testing is. And this is something we haven't really brought to you before because we were living in just like, let's get the data collected and let's do something with it. And now that we're really good at that, we've been able to dive in to diagnostic assessment, and it's a game changer. So diagnostic assessment sometimes lives in some of those universal screening platforms that I mentioned, and we just dig deeper into analyzing the data for individual students. Uh, but in reading, we made a big shift this year, and what we did is adopt the QPS. It's a quick phonics screener. And so for any student below a certain level, we give them this diagnostic assessment. And instead of using screening data, which is big picture, we use this diagnostic assessment data to create homogenous groupings with our students in their reading needs. So a good example of this is in grade five, we give the STAR assessment. If a student did, um, perform poorly on that, we gave them maybe a fluency assessment. If they did poorly on that, we gave them a diagnostic assessment, and then we targeted their intervention, um, instruction, which is really, I think this, when you talk to other schools doing MTSS, this is a set, this is sets apart. A lot of schools are not taking their data analysis and their data collection into the world of diagnostic. They're living in universal screening. So kudos to our intervention staff. They dug in and did literally hundreds of one-on-one testing sessions to get students grouped correctly. Um, and we're always continuing to research and grow. Mathematics is definitely an area we need to explore next in terms of what we need to do diagnostically to intervene with students. Um, progress monitoring is the next, you know, core element within that strong assessment system. We've seen this before. I don't know. I love this picture, but, um, once the students have been universally screened, once we have done diagnostic assessments on them, then we get together and we group them into those homogenous groups, and then we decide what intervention is best to meet their need, and how are we going to measure its growth? So progress monitoring means that you are choosing something to monitor growth that is sensitive. Sensitive enough to tell you that what I'm doing is working, sensitive enough so that we can respond if it is not. And so progress monitoring typically is a little probe that happens, uh, weekly, every other week, monthly, depending on the student's need. And it can take anywhere from one to fifteen minutes. Most of them take one minutes, and they really drive all of our database decision-making at the individual student level. Again, this is an area where we shine, where we shine in terms of the conversations that our interventionists are having and that we're starting to bring to our teachers in terms of their complexity is, is really phenomenal. Um, and I'm really excited to share that on eleven twenty, we were able to bring the first training to teachers in terms of the new platform that we're using to look at this data so that they know where to access the data, how to interpret it, how to start analyzing it, and we'll continue to build that out because it's, it's pretty complicated. Um, so this next slide I did share with you last year, but it, it just really nicely depicts how, how complex those conversations are and and the degree of conversation that is happening for thousands of children across the district. I mean, it's phenomenal when you think about there is a name attached to thousands of graphs that look just like this. So just pay attention to the green and the blue. The green is the student goal line. And when we're talking about progress monitoring at our system, we set our expectation to end of year. Lot of systems don't do that. They say, you came in here, oh, this is realistic growth. We think you're gonna get here. Good enough. We've set it to a realistic, and we make decisions based on if we're getting to realistic or not. So that closes the issue gap. The blue dots are those progress monitoring probes that are sensitive to our instruction that tell us what we're doing now in the classroom and intervention is working. The little black square is where that student's, um, started. Then the intervention happened, we collected all that data, and you can see that blue trend line is going to surpass their goal line. And again, end of the year goal, uh, growth. So this student, we would continue on, we'd exit them early, and they would go back into tier one, and we would open up spots for more students or to intensify for more students. This is probably my favorite graph. Again, just pay attention to the green and the blue. The green is that goal line. The blue are those individual, um, weekly progress mon- monitoring probes. And you can see in this one, the student was trending upwards in that first section. But if we would have continued doing what we were doing, they would not reach their goal. So this is where, again, our system is different. In every six to ten weeks at the start of intervention, we have a big interventionist meeting where we look at every single one of these graphs, and we don't just hold on to a student because they're our student. We move students around based on what the data is telling us, and we intensify. So here, that gap that you see is not a gap of service, it's a change in their intervention where we intensified, and then you can see after we intensified, how the trend line went much higher. And that student was then projected to hit their end of the year goal. And then the, the data doesn't always look exactly like we want it to do, and this would be an example of a student who had many graphs that looked like this, and was continuing to not make progress, and in this case, maybe we would move on to a special ed eval. So again, you've seen this one before, but I think it depicts nicely the conversations that happen. And then those conversations have just gotten deeper this year and at the end of last year, where we're not just looking at the pretty colors and the graphs. We're talking about errors and accuracy and trend rate of improvement and goal rate of improvement, and what all the decisions need to be to get that child to, um, to where they need to be by the end of the year, to grade level. All right, so the last element within that strong assessment system is assessment fidelity. And I think, um, we would all say we probably underestimated the importance of paying attention to this in our first two years. We were just like, tests, and this is what it is, and this is how you do it, but we weren't really monitoring the fidelity of our assessment system. So that has changed. We now, I mean, it's, it's a little bit of compliance. We just monitor to make sure that every test is, is given within the timeframe, and, um, you can see with that ninety-seven to a hundred percent goal, we're almost there. The high schools are always gonna be a little bit low because in eleventh grade, we don't assess everybody. I expect that, ninety-seven, but we need to get to the nineties there. Um, kudos to the middle school this year. They have, um, they get the most improved award. They definitely have improved in, um, following our testing windows and, um, and testing all the different areas. Um, we've also incorporated this year fidelity chunks, so those progress monitoring probes where we're collecting all this important data, they need to be given a certain way. And so we do observations of people delivering those to make sure they're hitting all of the standardization elements. We also do this with licensed teachers who are administering, um, the one-to-one assessments with our K-one and two and three students. We make sure that they are completely standardized in their delivery. And, um, we've also encouraged principals to do walkthroughs for standardization, and then our principals were fabulous about, um, coordinating efforts during welcome back to share with staff the training and the access to the training that they need to deliver the universal screeners perfectly with standardization. So the thought behind that is it's unfair for one child to sit down and have a teacher say, take a test, and then the other one to have a teacher go through a script telling the child exactly how they can be successful on the, on the script, on the test. That needs to happen every time. And then lastly, we won't go into this link, but we have our MTSS cycle, which has really built itself out where we really have an app, just a system for checks and balances of everything that we've just developed here. So we, we, um, located it at every building. And then, um, in the K-eight buildings, we have our comprehensive year state of the building staff meeting. And, um, you know, to use Matt's terms, I think it's fair and right that the people in a building know what the data is saying about that building. So me as the physical education teacher, I should know what's happening with reading. I should have a sense of urgency around that. I should care about what that data is saying about the building where I work and about our students' growth. So these state-of-the-year buildings, the purpose is really celebratory. It's to build collective efficacy. It's to build shared awareness, reflection, and growth. And then we've just gotten to that, you're looking at areas of disproportionality. So we won't go into the link, but you have that, or we can get that for you. Um, East, um, East example is here, and it's just a nice example of, um, everything that we cover at those state of the buildings. And then when there's something big that needs to be hit across systems, we build that into the template. So then we have assurances that everybody's seeing the same information across buildings at the same time. So those are our elements, and now the tougher shift that we're in right now, like Anna said, is database decision-making.
Okay, so as Anna talked about our database decision-making, this is what we are grounded in, all the work at the building levels. Um, it does align with what we're doing, um, at the strategy team. We just wanna make sure we have alignment across all of the elementary schools. So what we're doing at East is the same as what they're doing at Cohasset or the middle school. Um, it allows us to evaluate outcomes for students and look for those inequities and little pockets, um, of disproportionality. And it helps us, um, figure out where we're at and what we need to do, and if there's any causes to what the data is telling us at each school. So this came, uh, with the students, uh, with the teachers. They see this in their carry-all training, so that helps them make the connection with the carry-all training and what we're doing in the classroom. It's a five-step process. And currently, we're working on the current performance, the performance analysis, and the plan development. And that's what teachers did. We've been working on it through early out. We'll continue with it in this next cycle and this winter and spring, and then also next year. So a little more detail with that, um, that the first step is the teachers looked at their data, all that data that Jen was talking about, and they look at that and think, is there something going on different than what I should be expecting? We don't want that eighty percent proficiency in math and reading, and if we're not there, then what's going on? Um, does it show certain genders, certain groups of students, certain sub-populations? What, what are some barriers? What is it telling us? And what percentage of proficiency are we at in those areas in each classroom? And then the teachers look at that, they analyze it, why, why is this happening, and what is missing? What skills do the, the students need? And they did this in teams this year, so, and then they brought that something new to the annual goal setting, setting meetings with the principals. They brought their goal they made. So it was really nice. I'm just wrapping up with all fifth grade right now, and I got to see, see the, the common theme or the thread with all the different, um, seven sections of fifth grade and how the data looked from each different class. So because they did it in teams and then met, brought that with their principals for goal setting, they could see if some classrooms are more successful, and it'll be interesting to see once we dig into it throughout the rest of the year, why and then what they did about that. Um, and then they made their plan. So they found out what their class was, what they needed to do, and then their specific plan. So within that, it could be things in the classroom, um, tier one things, adjustments they needed to make. Some had students that go to tier two, go to tier three, um, and so on. Also, right now, we're in our winter screening, so once winter screening is done, we'll go back to this plan and then see where we're at. Hopefully, the proficiency is increasing. Hopefully, more students are, are exiting out of interventions, and we're just getting more information about them and getting to stronger proficiency. And then step four or five, we're still working on this in our early out cycle, but just implementing that, like I talked about, monitoring that and making sure that what we said we were gonna do, we're doing, sticking to that at early outs, um, and just keeping track on how those kids are doing. And then same with evaluation. This will come at the end of the spring, um, when we do our spring testing. Did we meet the goal? What, what, if not, what are some things we can think about for next year? And then we'll complete the cycle again next year with their annual goal setting. And, actually.
So I get to talk about how this impacts tier one and then tier two. And so I've been in the district. This is my fifteenth year. And beyond all this, I will say, even though financially we're not doing super awesome, systemically, we are doing so great. I would say that we're the healthiest place we've been where we can actually talk about students in a really meaningful way. Um, and it's really exciting to see. So as they were saying, we benchmark three times a year, and it's happening right now, and, um, we're able to use all that information to create strategic groupings for our own students in our classroom, and then how we partner with our interventionists. And so we make sure that every single student in our school that does not meet grade level is tiered up somehow or paired up somehow with an intervention that will best meet their needs, and then it's closely watched. Also, then we can use that information to kinda queue up maybe who might be a good, uh, candidate for gifted and talented screening. Even as young as first grade, we can kinda start looking at their percentile and start watching those patterns and seeing if we need to do additional testing just to make sure we have those numbers in, in mind, so when we are getting to space for different services for them, we're ready. Also, with benchmarking, we really use that to kinda guide our whole group instruction. So I know they're mentioning Orton-Gillingham, and that's been a major game changer for our instruction. We didn't realize, at least I didn't in the classroom, and I have a pretty big background in literacy of how big our hole was in phonics, until we started getting benchmark information, and it showed, yeah, that's a massive hole that we have. And then Orton-Gillingham came right in as our instructional approach to help fill in the hole. And you'll see with our data being first grade, and we've been doing it for about three to four years now of solid, or OG, that there's been huge changes because of it. But we didn't really have the data to prove that it was a need until this came along. Um, also with our math instruction, it can also help tier, queue us up there as well. For example, benchmarking shows us that these values are a weakness in first grade. So we shifted what we're doing, and you'll see as well that that's kinda been filled in now, so that's been really helpful. Um, we also, I love the winter adjustments. Like, right now is kinda, I geek out right now. It's really exciting. Things are happening. Um, as they were mentioning, we adjusted the windows. So this year, it's a little different, so people have feels about that, but it's happening right now so that we were queued up to come back January. We're starting fresh. Uh, because before, where it's like, we come back in January, and then people say the data might not be accurate, because they're like, wait, nobody's gonna help you, right? But I'm really excited to come back and be ready to start. So I also get to serve with our MTSS team, and so right now, we're screening, and then we'll be meeting the week before break starts to realign our groups, have a plan, and then we'll be meeting with our teams to know exactly how we're set up to come back. So that's really exciting. Um, as I was saying about the national percentile, that's really, really important to be watching for both, not only, um, students that you're watching who might be in special education support, but also they're saying that gate window. So those percentiles kinda actually tell us much more than maybe the other scores, and it's just a little bit of a deeper dig. Um, and then of course, what's working in your tier one and what's not, and what we need to change. So for example, this is my data, and this is one of the, um, from last year. And so there's two different scores you can kinda look at, but this is from benchmarking. And this is the one I really like because it doesn't just show you who's at grade level, but it also gives you that, like, peak into your, um, uh, excelling. So we have below, obviously, so low, approaching, at, and then you're exceeds. And of course, we'd want these ones to go down and these ones to go up. And so you can really disaggregate it a little bit more. When we are first getting used to structure, we can look at this report, we can look at a different one that would just kinda tell you who's where they need to be, who's below and who's about there. Um, this has been really, really helpful to kinda come up with, again, those strategic groupings, and then how can you make And then how can you make sure that not only your kids that are above grade, that are at grade level, they don't just want to stay there? We want to make sure every kid's making growth, right? So we can look at that really closely and that's been super helpful. Okay, so then progress monitoring. Okay, I forgot to bring my water up, I'm in my water. So progress monitoring is clutch, like they were talking about. Because it allows for us to make micro adjustments all the time. So Bobby Adams, who's the interventionist that would have been here, her classrooms are across the hall from me. And we're constantly talking on Wednesdays. That's when the progress monitor will make micro adjustments right then, based on what we're seeing. If I'm seeing this one kid is just not catching on to certain sounds and it's been like two weeks of this, I'll say like, hey, what are you thinking? How can we switch? And her and I will on the fly make an adjustment, like not a new intervention, but just like a little tweak that her and I are pretty proficient in to make that change to that kid the next day. And then we adjust and we continue to monitor. So again, as they were saying, students who are in tier two, so again, as a tier one teacher, Jen, Ed, my responsibility is not just tier one, it is also tier two. So any child I'm in a small group with, doing intervention with, I then take on that intervention role. But then, of course, they get services through ADSS and AmeriCorps and all other interventions. And then tier three would be your special education. So what we're doing is if this student is receiving any tier two level intervention, we need to be monitoring that every week. We want to make sure that we're not wasting a week of not making any growth from that child, right? Then as we expand larger, we can go to like bi-weekly or monthly, whatever you'd like. As Jen was saying, I'm kind of, so I'm one of the ones who probably tests more than they should, but I want to make sure I'm not losing anybody. And I also really like that time with kids. And again, going back to our strategic goals here, equitable uses of resources. I do have thirty kids in my first grade classroom, which is by far the most I've ever had. And if it wasn't for progress monitoring, I don't know that I can ensure that I'm making sure they're all learning. And why, this is my number, this is what I have, I will never use it as an excuse. I'm okay, like this is what we're doing, but to make sure it's working, I need to make sure I've got touch points, right? So, um, we meet with them and then we kind of see a purpose. So this next, this is um based on some work with Hattie. So John Hattie has a lot of work that says like when students have accountability to their own learning, right? If they're the ones who are kind of guiding their own instruction. And again, I'm first grade, so it looks a little different, but my students track their own learning. And so again, that's kind of why I'm weird about and do it a lot because I want them to make sure that they're seeing that part. And we kind of connect together. So some of my kids are above grade level and so their chart numbers look slightly different because their goals are gonna look different, right? But their paper looks the same as their peers. And so then we also really work together as a team. So I have a class of thirty students. I have one extenuating circumstance, so that one child does not receive, is not fast bridge assessed. He's got a completely different plan. Um, so when I take my class average, even though I have three other students who are on IEPs, they are my students and I'm responsible for their learning. So when I take those averages, that's a twenty-nine students, even though some of those are automatically, like currently, it's it's not appropriate, so they're like a zero. My team, my class, we're a team, we're all invested in this. And so every week we adjust and, you know, we do like the drumroll thing and we see that it's growing. And that's why like when we do a reading passage and we read it three times obnoxiously, it gives it purpose, right? Like, why are we doing this? We're working on our fluency. Okay, why are we doing the sight word flashcards? We're working on our fluency or each of the pieces that were monitored on. Um, so each of the kids have one of these for sight words and passages. And then we have both of these posted in our classroom. And there'll be weeks that'll flatline and then we have a conversation about it. Like, did we try our best that week? What were we struggling or was it just a hard passage? And those happen. But it's been really, I've been doing this now for several years. I was bummed out because normally I hold on to them and then I threw them out this year because I was like, this is so dumb. And then Jen asked me for pictures of them and they're gone. But, and then home to family. So again, with our strategic directions, we're talking about transparency and how important that is. And I believe in that, like as a mom in the district, I had the luxury of knowing exactly where my kids are because I'm connected to this discussion. But I feel very firmly that if I know as a teacher, anything about your kid, you should have the same information. And so again, I, my team, uh, uh, Jordan, I D nine, we send this home every time we progress monitor. And so families get a letter much like this and then their own students score for that, well, bi-weekly piece. And so some of my kids don't do the codables, like that is one of the sensitive tests. A lot of my kids don't need it anymore. So we cross that out and we keep growing and we just see how much they grow. And families, students know where their kids are and it gives kind of some meaning to like, hey, you know, those things we sent home for you to read? Like, that's working or maybe you should start doing those, you know, some of those conversations you can have. So we try to stay super connected in both those pieces with any of the information we have. For tier two, this is what Mrs. Adams is gonna talk about, but her job's been so cool to see change and adjust as we've added in these pieces and everything about MTSS and DART. So I get the opportunity to serve alongside her in both those pieces. So MTSS, it should be that multi-tier systems of support. We sit down and that giant crate that she had up with all the sticky notes, we go through our school as a whole and it's super fun. It's being a first grade teacher, having taught half those kids that show up in a two-section school. Um, and you kind of figure out who needs help and how are we gonna help them and what does that look like? And so every one of those sticky notes has a kid's name on it. And so every kid in our schools can get a lot, like paired up immediately with an intervention that's gonna help best work for them. And not only that, but then the intervention, like progress monitor form that we're gonna use to help monitor it as sensitively as possible. So those happen and that information gets shared with the classroom teachers too. So everyone knows what everyone's doing because you should know the data on your own kids, right? So you can make those adjustments. And so Mrs. Adams collects that, we make adjustments. And then also in tier two, right now, she's also servicing enrichment groups. So we have kids who are hitting those tiers that would be rate gate candidates or they're already going through gate testing that are getting that extra enrichment support. And that's happening across all of our outreach abilities, which is really exciting to see. Um, also with tier two, there's multiple different types of interventions that are now being offered. So it's not just um like back in the day when we had LLI, everybody got the same thing, right? So now it looks different based on whatever that kid's needs are, whether it's comprehension, whether it's phonics, whether it's meaningful awareness, it it's very, you know, down has been like, based on a diagnostic report of what we can do to help that kid. Um, a need would be math. We're not quite there yet um in all the sites, but this has been a huge game changer. So that when we do go to a CST meeting, when we're talking about a special education evaluation, our data is straight numbers. There's no, there's not a lot to say about that. Um, we can obviously have a narrative to share, but it's very easy to be very clear about the pieces. The one thing that's really important that Jen was talking about is we do make an adjustment on their goal. So she was talking very clearly about how end of the year goal. And we've adjusted that now. If any kid is going to dart for a realistic goal for that child. And so that's kind of hard for some classroom teachers to like swallow. Because what we're saying is, no, that kid's not gonna end the year at grade level, but the intervention is working because they're making realistic growth. And so those are really good conversations that we're having at the dart table at MTSS and with classroom teachers starting to get better understanding around that. So that's tier one and tier two.
Hi, I'm really excited to be here representing tier three. Um, we've heard a lot about overall, we've heard a lot about classroom, and now I get to talk about the individual child and that makes me very excited. Um, so over the last three years, I've seen a lot of change since I've been there. And it's really awesome to see that specialized is included in this. We now have a data monitoring system where we can guide our instruction, we can alter it where we need to. So um you probably are very aware, but when a child qualifies for special services, we take the deviation, if they have a big enough deviation between their intellectual score and their academic score. And usually it's a couple of years is why it's hard to qualify for special ed. But when you do, um, there's things that we need to look at. In the past, when you qualified, we had a hard time as a specialized teacher seeing where they were at or where we were to begin. And now we have something and that has just been really awesome for us. Um, we use, when a student qualifies, I can look at their star scores, I can see where the grade equivalence is. So I know exactly where to start for them. Um, once you know their academic levels, um, the student is screened at their instructional level, not their grade level because we know that they're below grade level. And then I can take that data and I, it guides me to write their individual education plan. And along with that, I can tell their parents, this is where they are at individually compared to where their peers are at. Um, and intervention is set up in FastBridge and monitored, any of the FastBridge or EduCimer, but EduCimer really has everything that we need. So this is what it looks like for me. And I know that um there's a little green little, oh, could I actually use that? I don't know if I'm brave enough.
Yeah, there is.
But this, this in yellow, you're gonna see that I have these scores that I can use. And in the fall, this student scored nine eighty and that told me that he was actually at the ninth grade of the ninth month of third grade. So this November, when he took his star testing again, um, he scored at the sixth month of fourth grade, which is really awesome. I could see that he was really growing because that star score really does tell us where's that academic benchmark for them and how are they gonna do on the MCEs? I will share with you, this is not the first year I had this student because he is a fourth grade student and he's catching up. And that's what we want. We're early intervention in the grade school. We want them to come in, we want them to do well so that we can exit them if that works for them for sure. This is looking at progress monitoring. I do monitor weekly, I look at their graphs weekly. This student has a goal that was written in the third grade. And also, so his objective would be for the third grade and the fourth grade because I have one year from the date of his meeting and I want to see that he's making growth. And mine, I usually save the grade that they're instructionally at and I want to move them to another grade. He was at the third grade, he or she. Um, this student was at the third grade and did move to the fourth grade. So you can see that the blue is third grade and the red is fourth grade. On, so when you look at this, on the bottom of that graph, I see this. And what I love about this is I can see an up arrow, I have the dates on there that I tested. I can see if they're going up, I can see the words that they're missing and I can make a note because maybe they went down a little bit, but maybe they said a three-word phrase three times and that could be nine to twelve words. So I take that into account at that point. Um, the monitoring graphs you see below is um what I would use to see if maybe I need to amend an IP. This student, you can see that their goal line is in green. It, and this student has met that goal on three occasions by monitoring him weekly, looking at his goals. Um, I'm able to see and then down below, you can also see the scores, the errors that they made and their accuracy. I really pay attention to that because I think it's important that that accuracy piece is there. Um, I don't want to be working with them instructionally at a level that is um exceeding where they're at instructionally because they're not gonna grow as fast. So I do kind of take all that into account as well. So this is kind of fun. In my room as well, everybody has their own individual plan. They have their own student graph and I love this. You can tell this student right here, they were at third grade level, they passed their goal, you can see. And now I started the fourth in October, I started their fourth grade goal. I think it's super cool. This is a mold. They have a fifth grade cool boy, want their picture taken and sent home to their mom because they went out this week. So before I even started testing, they say, oh, can I see my graph? What do I need to get? I mean, that's buying, that's motivation for for them and that's cool. Um, I get weekly, I sign up to get monthly emails to say how my progress is going. I can see their rate of improvement. What I did cut off on this is below, it will also tell me their attendance, which is really kind of anything. So down below this, it would share like, were they absent or was it a school-related something? And those are all things that I put in as well, which I'll explain later. But um, I I do love getting this monthly, I can look at that. You can tell, you can see that I'm using Orton Gillingham. I am seeing this child thirty minutes a day, five times a week. So if a student is not making appropriate progress, I don't right away just change my intervention. I need to actually see, is there something causing this that is beyond just my instruction? I don't want to just change it too quickly. So is there attendance a factor? So as special education teachers, Anna does have us put in attendance um daily. And I think it's it's awesome information. For this student right here, you can see that if this student is struggling, you can tell that in orange, this child has been absent that much. The blue is school-related, um, could be Starbase, could be a Halloween party, I don't care. They're in school, but they're not with me. That changes their instruction. So I know now that, and down below, you can see that I put it in by date. I say if it's school-related or if it's a school event or if it's just the student is absent. Um, this student has missed more than a quarter of my instruction. So I'm not gonna change the, well, what I am gonna do is I check the truancy. And I say, have you notified this family? Because I'm really concerned about this right now. And I notify the parents as well. Um, have that conversation with, you know, like today there was a, you know, there was a fun day in school and it was an, and all they seeing for one that the class had earned. And I said, you know, I need more half an hour because I have to keep in mind, you know, if I have a child who's in the fourth grade and they're reading at a first grade level, I want to make sure that I am getting the instruction that I need. So the second thing I'm gonna look at is I'm gonna look at my monthly email progress report. And I'm also gonna look at EduCimer to see if they are risk unsavers. Now, the student that I showed you that had um absentee issues and was, had missed over quarter of my instruction, scored at a risk unsavers, which is our social academic, social emotional rating. So when you look at this, what are the challenges of an at-risk student? Um, attitude towards school, low ability level, um, a tendency, intruency, behavioral problems, poor peer relationships. My student has four out of five of those. So those are things that I want to take into account. If there aren't attend, if there aren't any attendance issues and everything's going really well, they're always in class, they're doing their homework, there's no reason, I need to add an intervention. Oftentimes for me, I'll keep Orton Gillingham going, I'll amend their IP for maybe fifty-four minutes and I'll use something called press. I'll do something that's gonna push them to the next level and that would be one-to-one. So Orton Gillingham isn't a really, it is, it's structured at like an ability group. I bring different abilities together, more than grade, it goes by ability. And I may add a one-to-one press in that case. And then on my graph, you're gonna see where I'm doing Orton Gillingham, you're gonna see where I added an intervention. So in closing, I just want to say as a special education teacher right now, we have the tools to monitor our students at their instructional level. Um, we can change our intervention in a timely manner if needed and we can communicate to parents by showing them graphs. You know, we can, we can talk all we want, but if we put a graph in front of a parent, that is so impactful. And I think the biggest thing for me, I'm honestly gonna say, is that when we go to a call, conference and and we see this is when we roll out somebody's MCE scores, it is not my parents' favorite thing. You know what? We already know they're lower. Is that time, is that telling our parents that, no, really, they're doing actually really well individually? No, but we can show the MCE scores, they're very important for them to see. But I can also say, this is where they're at right now, this is where they started, this is where they're at now. We have those tools, it's not just an MCE score anymore, it's individually where are they at? And now we have the graphs and the tools to do that. So a couple of things that I would show at that meeting is I would show the star report. You can see where in the fall, my student here went from partially meeting to in the winter now, he has met. I have high hopes that some of my students right now are gonna meet the MCAs, I hope. Um, I will tell you, since we have been doing this in the last three years, I have exited many of my readers, which is really, really exciting. That is what early intervention in grade school should be like. We have some kids that of course are lower and will continue in that program. This isn't for everybody, but I have really never exited as many as I have in the last three years. This is a graph of a little girl that I could show her parents, a little girl or a little boy, I don't even know. I just put different graphs up of my students. But this is a third grade student who is reading at a first grade level. I can tell her parents that she's reading seventy-two words a minute at her grade level next to her peers who are reading eighty-seven words a minute at the third grade level. But guess what? I get to show her parents that maybe she's below grade level, but look at the progress she made. And as a mom, I want to see that they're making that progress. So I think that's kind of exciting.
So thank you very much. All right, so um, you know, we very intentionally brought the ladies in today to take you through what this looks like, my tier one, tier two, tier three. So Anna and I just briefly are going to share some systems level examples um of of how we're using data in our practices and data. So um you've seen this graph before, you haven't seen the most recent one, but we'll talk through it. So um this is our foundational skills data for kindergarten and first grade. Um, and for the last three years, we've been seeing growth and reduction in our high-risk students and we are Um, and for the last three years, we've been seeing growth and reduction in our high-risk students and we attribute that to. Our strong intervention system, but more importantly, our tier one instruction in Orton Gillingham. Um, but you can see that last year in the spring, we had a dip down and I can't say that I was totally surprised by that. Um, any strong system, when you implement it, you're going to experience drift and, and, and that is gonna change. Um, so we looked at this data and we didn't just leave it and say, okay, let's do more of the same. We stopped and we made a hypothesis about why do we think that occurred? Well, first of all, kindergartners came in last year four percent lower than the year before. That's gonna be a contributing factor. But we really did land on, we think that there was some drift in implementation fidelity of Orton Gillingham practices. And so in response to that, we um use this data to get staff trained as Orton Gillingham certified. They went through an extensive training for that. Staff are then meeting, these people are meeting with principals to review the key components of OG fidelity. To tee the principals up, they can't be um experts in everything, to be able to go into a classroom and be like, these are the key elements. I should see if it's being done with fidelity and then to support that. They're doing it on a systems level, not on an individual teacher level. This isn't evaluative. It's just going in and making sure that we have fidelity. Um, they're doing this through walkthroughs. They then meet with our OG certified people and we go through the data. And then we tee them up for the next walkthrough. So we're constantly trying to build towards that fidelity. And so do we expect that that data will go back up with all those fidelity elements in place? Absolutely we do. And if we don't see that data go up, we'll. We'll look at the data and make another hypothesis and act on it. So I think, I actually think this is, if you unpack this for what it is, all the elements from teachers, like thirty hours of training to get to that point. Everybody doing the same thing, principals. This is a beautiful example of how schools should run. When looking at data and responding to it. I think it's, it's really a great example. Um, this is another example, just really quickly, these are um different schools. The colors are different schools. This first graph shows you all students. Influency tests over time from fall twenty-two to spring of last year, all students except for kids who received tier two. So the tier two kids are out of there. Tier two kids are down here. And what's really cool about this graph is you can see the slopes are similar for three out of the four schools. Obviously, we have to do something here with the school here. But in two out of the four schools here, our tier two students outperformed in growth. Words per minute over time than our tier one. So that's a perfect example how Core and More works. That is the only way you're going to close achievement gaps is if these students. Grow at a higher rate than these students. So they're catching up, which is beautiful. And at the same time, they didn't plateau. The kids who were not tier two continued to grow at a nice rate as well. So those are two systems um. Examples and Anna will take you through a special education example.
Hey, um, just quickly, the graph you're looking at is the average FastBridge early reading score for all of our K-one students. Across the district. So um it starts on fall twenty-twenty-one and you can see the low points are the fall every year, the high points are spring. Um, but the interesting thing to notice over time, and this is our, um again, focused on our literacy instruction and intervention. That that is trending up over time. We've seen a seventeen percent increase in spring scores since twenty-twenty-one. Um, and this is with a lot going on. Um. So we've had, as Brenda mentioned, we've had a lot of exits. So as we've implemented. Um, our Orton Gillingham reading instruction and as we've, you know, worked towards fidelity on that, we've had better data-taking practices. We are exiting kids all the time. So that's great. Um. So this is with exits, which is really interesting because then those kids are no longer counted in the data. So as they move up. We don't get to keep them in our data set anymore. But so even with exits and also the other thing that's been happening during this same time of, as we've been testing more kids. One of the things that we noticed um was a lot of our students weren't getting tested. And specifically our students with cognitive impairments. And at this point, so we were um, we really want every student tested with the exception of about one percent of the students in a building. So if you have a building of six hundred students, there's six hundred students, there's probably about six that aren't appropriate for testing. Um, so we also increased the number of students that we were testing and that includes some of our students with the most significant barriers. Um, and we're still seeing good increases. So that's really exciting. Um. So if I wasn't seeing data like this, some of the things that I might do, and I do anyway, just because. Um, is I might break this down by building. So I might pull these graphs by building. Um, I might look at a specific program disability category. Um, so I can kind of pull that data in a lot of different ways. So. If I was not trending up, um, I would do some of that diagnostic work before I would go towards like, what's my solution gonna be? To make sure I have a good handle on what the actual problem is. So.
All right, and over to Ryan.
So the next few slides are on our MCA data and um I sit back and think like, at times people ask us, what are we doing about our MCA data? You just heard it. That's amazing. This stuff wasn't happening four years ago. These systems take time to build. And when I say not yet, we're not seeing it yet, but it's coming. Um, this is exciting. It takes time to build systems. It takes time to put things in place for kids, but we're going to be seeing it soon. And um, so again, when I talk about our data, we're just not there yet. We will. There's glimmers of hope in our data. Um, but there are some areas that we need to dive into with a sense of urgency and we'll talk a little bit about that today. So. When people ask, well, what are we doing? You heard, we're doing a lot of great things. Um, you get goosebumps thinking about um the data, what's happening for kids as a result of having um clear data as well. So here's the reading. Uh, again, you could find this on our MDE, on the MDE site under Minnesota Report Card. Take a peek. Again, there's some highlights in the data there. Um, in certain grades, grade five, you could see there's a two percent increase, grade six. Two percent, grade seven, three point six percent. Um, you could see, we've heard earlier, our scores are higher than neighboring districts and that's okay. Like we hear we're, we're above the state or higher than neighboring districts, but we're not satisfied there. We need to continue to push forward. Um, with a sense of urgency. Number of things, solutions in place there. Um, implementation of decoding curriculum over the past four years, we have interventions in place. Um, and again. For both special education and general education. Um, we've had the intervention block. We've talked about that before. Of including that, so kids are pulled out at a certain time. They're not missing core instruction. We've had our carry-all training as a result of the READ Act that all K-five teachers are going through in K-12 Special Ed this year. Um, getting training. We have adoption of our uh Witten Wisdom Curriculum K-eight, which has been great. It really. Fits that upper end of Scarborough's rope that we've been missing. Um, and we believe that knowledge-based curriculum is going to be um very impactful. We have a number of things, great things, and you heard about them going on in our early outs around strategic direction work. And things of that nature, which is exciting as well. Um, you saw Carol here a few weeks ago explaining what she's doing with the reading coaching piece. And then as principals, we're doing targeted walkthroughs. We're looking for specific things that sort of relates to the curriculum as well. And so you could see uh fifty-three point eight percent of our students in the area of reading were proficient. Again, we're not satisfied there. We're gonna continue to push. We have a number of things going on and we're excited about uh them. For math, you could see there's a glimmer of hope in specific grade levels, uh specifically in grade five. Um, again, the district's higher than uh districts around us. Okay, we still have work to do. We have a number of things happening in the future here with new standards, new curriculum, taking that through the same process we did with ELA. Um, Special Ed added a new intervention twenty-two, twenty-three. And we have continued support with math interventionists and we're continuing to seek out um American or folks. In fact, we have more of them are in and around our buildings this year. In the area of science, we adopted a new K-eight uh curriculum. Um, we have walkthroughs for implementation and we have early outs dedicated. Again, um, not satisfied. And when I talk about a sense of urgency, those, this is one of those areas that we really need to, would need to push. Our new science standards will be tested this year. Again, Matt talked about earlier, the continuous improvement cycle that we have in our district. You've seen this brought to the board. Um, a year ago, but again, it's here and it just, there's a lot happening here. We're, a lot of work being done with this by listening. Uh, taking feedback from staff, reflecting, working with our BLTs, walkthroughs and fidelity checks. Um, looking at new research, but also taking into account older research. Um, we brought evidence-based practice. We brought Anita Archer's work to, to the table this year and we rolled that out to staff and some training. And then just making sure we have a constant state of growth, reflection and refinement through this process to continue to better our systems. Again, um, if you think back uh four years ago, whether it be COVID, we didn't sit back and just take a break. We continue to push forward, push forward, push forward, and we're gonna continue to do that because um it's what kids need. They need our best. Barriers for improvement.
All right, so. Some barriers that we're experiencing, just as we've been moving through the work over the last um few years here is. We really um need to bump up tier one capacity. If you look at our um, at the two colored pyramids here, and I'm sure you've seen these before. As kind of a representation of our data, um, green being tier one, yellow being tier two, red being tier three. Right now, we're seeing about double the amount of students in a tier three that we'd wanna see, about double the amount of students that we'd wanna see in a tier two. Um, and the problem with that and um really is. Schools with the funding that we get and the resources that we have, we don't have capacity to intervene at that level on that many kids. So we really need to build up that tier one capacity um to meet the needs of more of our students. And again, this is something, you know, kids change over time. Um, you know, I think back to when I started in education a long time ago and the kids, they look different. Um, you know, they. They have a lot of different factors and, and we need to keep up with those as we move through. So. We've adopted a new science and literacy curriculum. Um, and we just need to continue to ensure that teachers have time, practice and professional development with those evidence-based tools. Um, at that tier one level. We've really built out some of the tier three and tier two work and now it's really leaning onto that tier one work. Um, you know, and really prioritizing competing demands. When our pyramid looks like this, you have to put resources in tier two and tier three, but then that pulls away. Resources from tier one. So it's always this decision about where do we put the resources? Where do we put, you know, the energy? To get the most bang for our buck. Um, we really need increased leadership capacity at all levels. Um, we'd like to see this happen through our shared leadership teams at the building level. We have so many experts. Doing wonderful work in their classrooms who could provide a lot of expertise and support to their um, to their grade levels or their teams. And we just really like to increase that capacity with the people who are right in their classrooms doing the work. I mean, you heard from them today. There's truly amazing things happening at that classroom level. Um, you know, we, we have some historical patterns of behavior around change. Um, that we're working through and some of that, you know, that's just something we're all dealing with, right? Um, sometimes we've gotten pushed back, we've thrown out the initiative and started over. And every time that happens, it sets us back, right? So um, so we're really working on how do we stay the course? How do we make adjustments where they're needed? And we know adjustments are needed. Things are not gonna be perfect when you start. You have to get into it to learn what's needed. Um, but when those challenges come up, how do we maintain engagement? And when we're right in the messy middle, which is where we're at, um, and there's confusion and frustration, which we experience at times. Um, you know, it is tempting to say, are we doing the wrong thing? You know, but the decisions that were made about how to move forward were grounded in research and what we know is best for kids. Um, they were not slapstick decisions. We looked at our data, we looked at what was effective and what was working. Um, and what was supported by the research. So um, we need to just make those micro-adjustments as we go and learn to kind of live and work through some of that tension. Live in tension and work through it a little bit. Um, I'd love to be up here and say that the impact of budget cuts is non-existent. Um, that's not true. So um, as we, you know, when we look at capacity, capacity of people in classrooms, as those class sizes go up. They have to learn new skills to meet the demands of the higher case, like the higher numbers, higher caseloads, higher class sizes. Um, so that's already putting stress and I just have to commend the people who are just leaning in and working through this anyway. I mean, you saw all the great work happening at the classroom level and that's happening despite other challenges being added to their plate. As an outcome of budget cuts. Um, we're also seeing that there's, again, we're just running into some capacity with how that work gets led. Um, you know, and just balancing the management of the day-to-day. With making sure we're doing the things to get our initiatives and get our implementation to fidelity. Um, and ensure that teachers have the support that they need. Um, so those, we're always balancing those things. And lastly, um, technology has been a real kind of bugger. All of these systems, to be able to pull data and do these things are really grounded in technology and we've felt the impacts of that more than ever. Um, within the last couple of years, as that department has been reduced over time. So um, some things that we think, you know, to work through the barriers or some things that we can do to improve is. Really just stay consistent with a predictable framework. You know, last spring and right now, we've talked to you through a lot of the framework that we have in place to con, just to continue to move forward. Um, and when it's tempting to abandon ship, um, we need to stay that course and make micro-adjustments based on feedback. But not throw the whole thing out the door when it gets stressful. Um, we need to keep fidelity at the forefront and continue to refine our walkthrough process. Um, you know, that's another barrier that had come up in the past where sometimes we started things and we just didn't see them to the finish line. We didn't get there. So. Um, so really keeping that fidelity in mind, making sure that teachers have support at all levels. Um, of where they're at with their learning and stay in alignment with that operational plan. We get a lot of opinions about what should be happening. Um, and ultimately, we need to feel confident in the decisions we made about the path forward. Um, we need to continue to work with Cara to find some creative funding options. That's something we didn't talk about a lot in this slide. But the, the amount of headstands that have been done to figure out how to fund some of these things creatively in the background. Um, couldn't have been done without Cara. So I just need to acknowledge her work there. Um, we're gonna continue to build that leadership capacity like we talked. And we're gonna continue to use a consistent process around curricular adoptions. And really ensuring that teachers have support at tier one level, um, tier two level and tier three level. So. You know, we need to really layer that support and make sure that we're working towards fidelity because sometimes that's been the problem. We haven't really had a layered plan in addressing staff's needs and we need to continue to work towards that. Any questions? That was a good one.
It's kind of hard to explain, but. We are consistent with the student population going through. From grade one through grade twelve.
Yeah.
Do you know? How many new students we get? So that when you're in first grade, how many kids are there in sixth grade?
Yeah, yeah, kind of that.
What is the turnover rate?
You know, I'm not really sure. I know, you know, I look at that for special ed and it's highly variable from year to year, just based on the local landscape. Um, for special ed. I don't know anybody in gen ed.
We got a lot of enrollments.
Yeah, right now it feels like we're turning over a lot.
I don't, I don't know that we have that data system-wide, like persisting enrollment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, it'd be interesting. Cause, cause that can skew your numbers.
Yep.
Um.
Yes.
You're always getting a new kid in and maybe they don't have this level.
Right.
Serving on the DART team at Cohasset, I will say that a lot of the students that come forth. In, at the DART table, based on data, are kids that we did not see K-one-two. There are a lot of new enrollments in pre, four, five.
Yes. And I, I, I truly believe that we're a transition district. And um, that can affect your scores.
Yeah, I, you know, and students do bounce with the um rise in online options. Kind of go and come back. They'll go for a year, come back. They'll go for six months and come back.
Yeah.
Um, so we are seeing a lot of just, you know, some gaps in, in our time with them. So, yep.
Other question, David here. Uh, this is an astonishing report. I am really uh very proud of the work that's being done uh under very, very difficult circumstances. Uh, but uh rising above it is absolutely incredible. Uh, work uh in data. Uh, and research and diagnostics is incredible. The attention to the individual students. Uh, in our program, it's not a, it's not a, a, a broad patch. It's individual students that are finding success. And that's absolutely incredible. And I. And I hope that, uh, you will share, uh, my admiration with the people in the trenches doing this work on a day-to-day basis. This is incredible. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well.
I don't have a question, but I remember when you and Matt Dass stood and asked for MTSS money. I remember. And, and at the same time, I remember, uh, one of the leadership folks saying, you either have to be all in or don't do it. And you have to be in it for the long haul. You can't pull it out. And in that space and all of the data that you have, and I'm a data geek, so I love it. Um, but this is one of those, it's hard to pull a plug on something that's working and the numbers are showing it because that takes the emotion out of it when you actually look at the numbers. And it's super impressive and I love the fact that you said we need more in tier one. That's my fear in public education is we have a lot of extra money for here and we have a lot of extra money for here. But we actually don't focus a lot. It's kind of like that kid that, hey, they get along and they do okay and they're good in school. But the one that's the behavioral problem is the one that the parents have to pay attention to. And so it's, I always think, what if we have that kid that can cure cancer somewhere in the bell curve? And we can't get them what they need. So I think that that's really cool. Super excited about the classroom stuff. Like that's a story we need to tell.
Yeah.
A lot of people need to hear it. And as a parent to know that my child didn't hit that MCA score, but I knew that they were improving. That's a field that, right? That leaves like knowing my kid's not. Not enough, right? I mean, that's the thing. And so just all around, what a great, great presentation. And you guys are doing such a great job at a time that was hard, both for, from the general public, but also from our financial standpoint. So thank you for all of the work.
And I think it goes back to the teachers, like there's so much happening at that classroom level. So.
For sure. Interested to see if the buildings will even move that faster. Cause now you have a lot of the grades together as opposed to separate and seeing what that'll do.
Yeah.
Kind of a cool space.
Thanks, everybody for the presentation.
Yeah.
Um. On in the agenda, the next item is the FY twenty-six budget preliminary time superintendent growth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is kind of the first, um, kind of, you know, it's not like deep conversational kind of thing. It's just sort of an awareness of where we're headed over the next couple of months. Um, I don't know, Julie, are you able to pull this up somehow? If I warned you about doing that. If not, that's okay. They have a copy, so it's not a big deal. Um, there, there are really only three, like, um, I say target dates in here, deadlines that we have to be aware of. The rest are really how we're filling in those gaps. The first target that we have to be aware of is on April fifteenth. That's a contractual deadline with our teachers group around ULA notification. So, uh, that's something built into this timeline. Uh, June thirtieth is a date that is important for a few different reasons. One is that statutorily, we have to have the ULA process done by then. And then second, we have to have the, uh, budget adoption for fiscal twenty-six kind of done by then. So those are really important. Uh, walking through a few things and just in general, I'd say this is a timeline that is less aggressive than last year, more aggressive than fiscal twenty-four. And part of, there are lots of reasons why that's the case. Um, that, you know, maybe get into this, well, I'll get into it now, I guess. That when we're looking at an even year fiscal budget, it ties back to something I said earlier when Kara was going through. Even getting a sense of what's happening legislatively matters because we want to be basing any decisions we can on our budget and corresponding reductions on the best information we have. And if we can get a sense from the legislature early enough, um, are they going to address the unemployment mess that they created? Are they going to address the compensatory revenue problem they created? If, if we get a sense that those are priorities, um, and that helps us make assumptions that are better, that gives us a better, kind of a more accurate ability to have a budget that's, that's, you know, um, going to be helpful. So anyway, working through some significant dates here, uh, first step obviously is this getting the fiscal twenty-five budget update. Kara's working on that now. We have to have this year's budget as the best shape we can be. And also as tight as we can so that we have the best idea about where we're going to end this year. So that we can make good decisions about how we're going to start next year. Um, going in here, January thirteenth, and this is, you know, a unique dynamic. We have three board, board members coming on. At their second meeting, we're going to be talking about a budget cut target. Um, and budget assumptions. So talk about steep learning curve. It's right there for people, but you know, we don't really have time to, to wait around for that. It's just the reality of our situation. So though that's just a work session to discuss, um, the budget, budget assumptions and to get an idea of where we might land for, for a reduction target. The ultimate decision on that, if you remember last year, and you know, just about every year, the boards made this uh, resolution directing the administration to make cuts. Um, to the degree that we can incorporate an actual number in there, I think that's helpful. Just so people get, uh, adjusted to our reality and where we're headed. Some informational meetings with, uh, leaders, staff, uh, union leaders in here, get some feedback. Another date that is out there and, and this is kind of that February first, end of January. Um, there are some incentives in their teacher agreement for staff that notify us by February first. And so, um, that's an important date that we're aware of. We've held staff meetings the last few years. I think it's been helpful to get out there and, and talk and listen about where we're at and why, again. Um, get feedback. Uh, we had a community meeting last year. It was very useful, uh, I think to, then we, it was well-attended in here. And so we're going to plan to do that again. The end of February is our target date for preliminary budget reductions. Um, again, that's probably a ten days off of last year. So pretty close, but a little bit more breathing room in there. And, um, then we'll start talking about what, how that would play out with stranding. Um, final reductions due March eleventh. We have a team from, in a union that we work through stranding with so that we can make sure, uh, be sure to get that right. It's too important to have any uncertainty about that. Um, it's very stressful and I want to make sure and get that right. After that is usually when I meet with board members to go through the implications or consequences of reductions. And then, um, the twenty-first of March is when that, that preliminary notice, if we're doing ULAs, that that would occur and the, um, then the board approves on the twenty-fourth. So, um, that's when that happens, that the approver, the approval goes out there and then ULA final approval on the seventh. Um, this gap in here is not enough time to accommodate, uh, or necessarily accommodate hearings. If someone would request a hearing on a ULA, so we would have to adjust this deadline here. Uh, or the seventh, adjust that date if there were to be hearings requested. And, um, that's something we can do, but ultimately we're trying to get that done in April. That's, you know, we want to be fair, as fair as we can to people that might be, uh, look, needing to look for a job. We want to take our time too, so we get it right. We want to make sure we hit our deadlines in June and April. So those are all the considerations, but this is what the timeline looks like at this point. And, um, again, it's kind of a, a little bit less aggressive than last year, but a little bit more aggressive than fiscal twenty-four. Any questions on that?
Those, the hearings would be in May, wouldn't they?
Yeah, they would be later. The, when we, um, when we have that notice of, um, on the twenty-fourth, when that the school board approves staff reductions and honor rules and ULA proposal, the, that resolution language is that we're proposing someone for ULA. That's when they have a certain amount of time to request a hearing. We have a certain amount of time to hold the hearing. Yeah. And then, um, by the time those get scheduled, that often ends up being kind of late April or May. The big thing is we just have to have that tear process complete by June thirtieth. And we're, you know, we're in a position where, you know, we don't have a lot of probationary staff anymore. So, uh, most staff reductions, if they're teacher reductions or principal reductions, um, require ULA.
David? Uh, Matt, Mark and I, uh, I'm sorry, Matt, jury and I went to the, uh, delegate assembly on Friday and heard, uh, extensive discussion about budgets. Um, the two thoughts, one is that there's very little money, uh, and, uh, the likelihood of additional funding, uh, coming in is pretty minimal, but beyond that, uh, uh, all bets are that the legislature will not finish on time, that it's going to go on later, which really gets us into a lot of trouble.
Yeah, they'll either, I think you're right. I think they'll either drag things on and not get done, or they just will, you know, agree to not get anything done. Um, so it's, uh, it's going to be interesting, uh, you know, this, when we have this house that's kind of locked up. Um, it's hard to speculate how it's going to play out and whether there'll be incentive to cooperate or incentive to just stay with the party so that, you know, there's not any, you know, partisan consequences to that. It, it's hard to say, you know, though, one of the things that, um, our, our public, kind of locally and at the state needs to observe is that this is a statewide problem. The number of school districts that are going to be making reductions this spring is going to be enormous. The, uh, school board association did a survey. I can't remember the, the, the data, but it was astounding. The percentage of districts that are making reductions this spring. So, you know, again, it's coming on the heels of a historic funding year. And I think that just kind of, um, points to what a misnomer that is, and also the impact of those, uh, mandates that we've talked about. Some of which, which, you know, for us, the unemployment, um, mess they created, uh, that's has the potential to be a two or $300,000 problem for us to fix with this budget. Then the compensatory formula change that they made has the potential that it'll be, um, you know, in that $800,000 range. That's a million dollars of a problem that they created that they didn't need to make. They didn't need to do that. Um, and they enacted laws without a long-term solution. And that, that kind of bad, you know, process is going to lead to pain here. So one of the things I'm hoping is that with, like you said, David, the, um, based on the, the outlook that we got last week from the state, um, that the ed orgs will kind of come together and realize that, uh, there's not a lot of powder to burn. And if they have a more unified approach to what to ask for, uh, that would increase the likelihood that we could get something, uh, what we need. Um, because I don't, I don't see there being a lot, a lot spread around. So.
Moving on in the agenda. Last item on the agenda and down, the indicator report.
You sat through a lot.
Well, you know, I, I, I work in a development pattern system, so that was actually.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, everyone, my name's Bianca Kargalina. I'm the current director on the district in three eighteen endowment hunt.
I'm Carrie Garbig. I am, I'm, I'm actually on my off year on endowment because, um, I cannot vote. So this is my seventh year on endowment and I also am a teacher in the district.
There you go. So we just wanted to offer a snapshot, um, of our most recent granting cycle, which closed, um, in October. Typically, it goes November. We, um, end the cycle about a month earlier this year to kind of accommodate requests and things like that. Um, so we awarded forty-eight of the sixty-five grants that we received or the requests that we received, uh, either partial or full funding. Um, so district employees requested in total, uh, grants equalling $131,000, um, in grants. Uh, and the endowment was able to award fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty cents. So it's nice to be able to have that, that number and be able to, um, build those grant requests. So this year we had a range of requests, um, the ones that we funded, uh, supported field trips, transportation, musical instruments, STEM projects, PE equipment, uh, debate program, um, and also calming and alternative seating needs in classrooms. So based on the submitted grants and receipt, most locations were awarded grant funds. This includes ALC, Big Fork, Cohasset, Eastern West Elementary, IEC, um, Grand Rapids High School, and also Harvard Middle School. So that's all I have as far as just that overall snapshot. Was there any other? I know that in the indicator report, we highlighted, um, a few of the grants that we supported. Only one of them, and it's a great little graphic, um, but one of them was, uh, an arts, uh, fund for just supplementing arts, um, programming, um, one that I was excited about was, um, uh, poet in residence at middle school. And just being able to offer that, that experience and I don't know, hopefully inspire youth to get excited about poetry. So. Are there any questions or anything?
Questions?
Well done. Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight. And this really is important to our students.
Absolutely. Well, I will say it's, um, exciting to be able to say yes sometimes, you know?
Yeah.
That's why I really enjoy being part of this granting subcommittee and to be able to, you know, create these opportunities that go above and beyond, um, and really allow for our students to thrive, um, which impacts our community thriving, right? Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Are there any other business to come before the board? Hearing none adjourned.